Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all to tonight's council meeting. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Thought we have to amend it. Chris will tell you about the amendment.
Yeah, uh, for the last three weeks, uh, it's been in the paper that we would accept bids for the, for the old airport, the ten acres that we've been renting for the last couple of years. And, uh, that was up April fourth, and I just forgot to put it on the, uh, on the agenda. So, we got, we only got one bid. We got it from CPS, they've, they've got it the last three years, so.
Normally, we don't vote on amended agendas, but. Or items, but since this is in a time crunch frame, right, Franny, you guys could plan anywhere between.
Tomorrow, hell.
Yeah. So, we're gonna amend it, and, uh, or I'll take a, a motion to amend it, and I wanna put that as the first new business.
Yeah.
But I would accept it, uh, and we will vote on that tonight because we're in a crunch time. Normally, we don't vote on that kinda stuff, but.
It was, and it was in the paper.
Yeah, and we have to vote on that tonight because of time constriction. So, I would, uh.
I move to accept the agenda with the amended amendment.
Second? We're moving second to accept the agenda with the, uh, uh, addition to the new business, the airport. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, amendment has been approved, uh, approve the minutes from last meeting.
Can make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second? We're moving second to approve the minutes from last meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Payroll and bills, I'm first, Franny, here is payroll. Chris, approved.
Thank you.
Franny?
Bills.
Yep.
Bills.
Rick is looking into the, uh, GPS. There's actually about four bills there, and all, what, they're about the same thing, so we just wanna make sure that's gonna be right. So, like, see, when we do approve the bills, we do that too with that, depending on what the income of that was. And then there's, uh, Michelle Witt, who actually got entered in there twice. And there's one more GPS bill we had to add on to there, that's for, uh, five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-nine cents for gas fittings. So, that changed our figure down below to a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Those are all four of the new additions, is that right, Rick?
Yeah. They're, like, the, all four sheets show about the same thing on them, just different dates, and so I just wanna get clarification on, uh, we try calling them, David, he didn't ask, but we're gonna look into that for sure, so.
He sent me an email, and he said that, uh, that the bills were coming in one by one from the manufacturers, that's why he was sending them to us like that, but, but check on it, make sure.
We just don't see it.
Everything's not exactly the same, yeah.
So, you said Franny, and Michelle Witt is a duty candidate?
Yeah, she actually is up above in ours, and then she's down below into, to the, uh, library where she should be in the library.
Above in what?
Uh, she's about three quarters way down in ours.
I see that.
And then she's in the library, she should just be in the library. I guess the only other one I'd question is, uh, the HALO. Or maybe we should just turn the incentive right back into us, and I don't know why we should give them a incentive if they owe us money.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't like that one either.
Discussion council?
Well, if they owe us money, then I don't think we should send it back to them.
I agree with that one.
So, we'll, uh, we'll take that one off of there.
What's the, what's the rolling signs for a police damage poll, Franny?
Well, I guess they knew I was gonna get court, they just had the poll up here, which.
Yep, we had, uh, and I can't even tell you when it was, probably a month and a half ago, we had an incident where, the story was, but this, this didn't come from the person who, who.
Allegedly.
Allegedly did it, but, story was that somebody pulled up to get gas, got out of their vehicle, their vehicle jumped into reverse and backed all the way up, and smacked into the sign.
Our sign, our, our.
Yep, and, and, you know, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't like the sign was gonna fall down, but it didn't look good, so we thought we'd get it fixed, and.
They got insurance, don't they?
That's what it costs.
People hit us, got insurance?
Allegedly, Gary. Allegedly hit us, there's no proof, so.
Like I said, you did it.
Take them to court?
I'd turn it over to you, it would be, it's in church, you shouldn't take them to court.
Now, if you're alleged. You gotta play a certain.
It's allegations, I mean.
Well, they know, they know, they know who the vehicle hit, right?
No. No.
Well, we don't know who did it.
It's alleged.
Yeah, they don't know who did it.
A story that we heard, Gary.
Okay. I thought they just knew who did that.
No, nobody's come forward and said, "I did that."
You can admit to it now if you want to, Gary.
Right there, nobody's seen it? Well, they probably did, but nobody's wanting to say anything.
Any other questions for Gary, uh, for Franny? If not, I would entertain a motion to, uh, pay the bills as amended?
Well, I got a question, Franny. We should probably have looked at this, but what is the H2O testing for manhole?
They do it monthly, they do a water test of, of, uh, houses or.
We've been doing, we've been doing some testing for WIE, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't get that mixed up.
I didn't know that close, but normally it's just housing, and it's about normal across, cost of the tech, right in there, so.
Don't they do that, what, three or four times a year, Franny?
Yeah, a lot of times, it's just, soon they gotta take.
Every month, you mean?
Gotta take water samples from the lagoon up and all that stuff, so.
And we've got quarterly ones, and yearly ones, and five-year ones, two-year ones. Every once a month, there's water samples go up.
What is IMU, Iowa Municipal Utilities WCISA, three eighty-two, Franny? It's about, uh.
Red Bull.
Red Bull.
Yeah, that's, uh, safety.
Yeah.
Uh, classes that they offer.
Oh, that's what we can't go through.
Well, and this isn't for one class, this is, this is our dues, so that whenever they offer a class, we can go to it. And they, they have them in Walleye, they have them in SAC, they have them in IPU, uh, frequently, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Franny? I entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make that one to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
And that's, just so I'm clear, that's without the hundred and twenty-five?
Yeah.
So, you can track that.
For HALO.
And the, yeah, the twenty-five, the new pick twenty-five, or Michelle Witt.
Hundred and fifty-two.
You already had.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh, yeah, one point five.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Basically, just the hundred and twenty-five off.
Mr. Rusionberg, CBVP, project update generators.
I just got about five items to go over.
Go, Joe.
All right. Still got a couple things that they get DNR, just splice them for the construction permit. They wanted a detail, or I gotta get them a detail for the pressure gauge and a sample tap off our new well line, which we're gonna run, just run it inside the wellhouse number two building. Probably run it in there along with the, uh, line from the flow meter for the readout inside the building too, so they'll all go in. Other thing was, they need a detail for the air release. You know, she wants it either above where it won't flood, or the option I'm gonna propose is that our intake or exhaust pipe, we get that, you know, bring that out of the manhole up above the ground, so that gets flooded, and the mannequin is, yeah, that the intake or the exhaust piping is above the ground. Should be acceptable, I mean, now that it's up out of the ground, and both are, are fenced, we're gonna try to pull that, 'cause I don't know if anywhere else we can put it. And that's the high point of the pipe, that's where we can get rid of the air and pipe. There's no else we can move it to get it out of the floodplain to where it'll work.
So, as far as the transformer, though, it looks to me like we're gonna have to move that up by the other back.
And I'm assuming we're still within that two hundred feet or four hundred feet, so we're gonna have to probably contain, put containment. See, there's another transformer, there's a switch gear there and another transformer there.
So, I don't think the switch is, is a big deal.
See, other transformer that's there, we'd have to probably put containment under that one too, since existing one, and now within that distance.
Yeah, and that is, uh, roughly a hundred and thirty, thirty-fourty, fifty feet from where we're looking right now, so. But the way it sounds, that, you know, if we can get that contained there, that should be okay.
Right.
So, this is the DNR that's now throwing the flags up, that, I mean, they looked at this, they knew that stuff was there, now we're throwing a flag up?
We had them come out and look it over, and then when Joe sent all the plans into Des Moines, uh, the lady down in Des Moines sent back a deal and said, "Hey, wait a minute here, there's a transformer here, why is that there? It's, you know, you can't have that right next to there." What are we supposed to do? You gotta run the well somehow. So, then she gave us this option of containing it.
We can do a variance to contain it, she still says, have it, and the reason we wanted it on the burn is to get it up above flood.
It's a tough way anyway.
So, then, so then she says, "Sure, you can contain it, but you can't have it that close to the well, you have to move it further away from the well."
She just said the variance would be harder to probably accept if it's still up on the burn there. So, we're gonna have to move it away, which puts it down where it could possibly get flooded, so.
And then, and then she told us in an email, which I was assuming the two hundred feet also, but she told us that a transformer is above ground storage, and it's gotta be four hundred feet from the well. So.
And we'd be talking, you know?
Yeah.
You know? You know?
And you gotta run the wire all the way back to the well.
Which we were gonna have to.
Do something anyway.
We would've had to come off of there.
Those boxes with the wire, and then just have a transformer up above on burn.
The biggest added cost there is to get the other transformer that there, that is there to contain. That's the biggest cost there.
What do they use for containment?
We had a detail where you could just concrete pad with six, eight-inch curb, curb on it.
Case for the whole containment.
Yeah?
Yeah, it, it, it's becoming a little bit tacky.
Yeah, I mean.
But, I mean, you don't wanna kick the DNR in the shin, really.
I know, but.
I mean, we'd like to.
I mean, we finally got a spot where we got water, we had a high date treats.
And they're fighting his tooth and nail with the whole thing.
They, they say we gotta have another well, but we can't put it anywhere.
You'd have to put almost a cement container all the way around, so high, right?
Right.
So, what do they do?
Two, three feet or something?
Somehow that's gotta be seen with two.
How big is this transformer?
Twenty-five KW, isn't it? Just little.
Yeah, it'd be like, what are those, two and a half, two and a half, or two by three, that'll be the last?
Yeah, it's probably, well, it's four foot long, probably.
Four, right.
Four by three, maybe? There you go.
And we gotta be able to get at it too, so you gotta make it big enough so you can get into it, and how much trouble it is to get in one of them, but.
They're not hard to get into.
And, I mean, if you've got a wall around it, wouldn't, you still.
Well, we're just talking six inches.
Six inches, right.
Yeah, because there's not a lot of oil in them.
But they're talking, if the oil leaks out, it's gonna be.
Oh, yeah, it's a water deal as well.
But that's just the maintenance thing too, every time you gotta rain or snowmelt, you're gonna have to bail it out, 'cause you can't have a plug in it to drain it out.
You're gonna have a sum. You're gonna have a sum.
Right, I mean, yeah, we can make that more than, so, so at least the transformer's up a little bit, so if you do get water or moisture in there, it's not sitting.
Yeah, I'm just gonna build it so the wall is, as high as where the transformer's at, so the water can't just sit in there and.
Get to the transformer.
Box itself.
And that's kinda how we had our detail, we had the pad, and then we went down six inches, and then back up with the curb. Just had a place for it.
Yeah, it's, it's a, uh, I mean, it's a good idea, nice little pad, but, I mean, seems like everything we try to do, they come back at us, so.
And the other two items, uh, railroad permit, the thing they were waiting on, and I sent this, Dave King a while back, was he had not contacted them yet as far as getting their insurance. You know, you gotta buy insurance that's up to their snuff just for when you're working, when they do it to board, or I think some railroads will allow you to pay so much, and they put you on their premium for so much, you know, while the project's going on. So, he's gotta get that worked out, he knows about it, last time I talked to Dave, he said he was getting things put together, and he was gonna contact him. And also, the other question is, he's gotta pay for the flagging, which was in the plans. He's gotta pay for the extra insurance and the flagging, that was all part of the project. I tried calling him today, 'cause I hadn't heard any more from him, but it had to be messy, so.
I'll try to get over them too.
I just kinda keep, I hadn't heard on that too. Um, and then the floodplain permit, you know, we sent that stuff all in, all back, um.
A while, two months ago.
And put, put, uh, requested out-of-order processing, 'cause otherwise, as he said, it was taking four, four months to get those approved. So, Kelly Stone told me, he was looking at me, end of April, you know, we do a lot of order processing, it would put top of the list. So, there again, I emailed him, I've been emailing him to kinda find out the status, I haven't heard any back, I emailed him this morning, just so I kinda know, you know, if he's still thinking in the monk. So, once I know some more, I'll probably copy Chris on it, so he knows. That's true, and shit.
So, are we still kind of on timeframe?
Oh, I think so, I mean, Dave kinda knows what we're, some of the things we're up against, like I said, a few things he's gotta work out himself to get going.
I didn't know if it was DNR with the pad that's, that's pushed us back any.
I, I think that's the least of our worries right now, honestly, I mean, the, the flood permit and the railroad are.
Railroad's a big thing.
Insurance can cost quite a bit of that in our plan.
The pad, the pad is just.
The railroad insurance was it, well, it was supposed to be in his bid, so, I mean, we can hold him to that. He called out that he's responsible for the railroad insurance and the flagging, that was part of, that was his cost.
We don't know what that is, though, Joe.
No. Any questions?
So, uh, if there's no other questions about that, while Joe's here, we'll talk a little bit about generators, and Joe and I haven't talked at all about generators, but, the generator that we got from Spring Lake, we've got it down here, Mark got it running, got it rewired, so now it's, uh.
Two two one twenty.
Two oh eight, or whatever the hell it is, uh, it'll work, it'll, Mark thinks it'll work down to our treatment plant. Okay? So, we looked into trading that generator in, if we trade it in, we get sixty-five hundred bucks, that's it. If we put it down there, it's worth thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to us. It's big enough to run it. So, the next thing we checked into, and, and Gary's idea of looking on the internet, I found a guy in Minnesota who buys generators and rebuilds them, or, you know, does whatever needs to be done to them to get them working right. We can get a twenty-five KW generator, uh, to put down at the drywell, the DNR's been wanting us to do that for quite a while.
Years.
For sixty-nine hundred and fifty bucks. So, instead of spending forty thousand dollars on a generator to put down there, I think we should take that one and put it down there, buy the seven thousand dollar generator and put it down here, get the DNR office a little bit on that. And then, uh, we were also, you know, we've been talking about having a generator for this building. Mark and I figured that a hundred KW generator would work, would run this building, and, uh, that guy in Minnesota has one of those for, um, fourteen-five. Uh, it's a nineteen ninety-four generator, it's got seven hundred dollars on it, looks like a pretty decent unit. So, that's nothing that we have to make a decision on tonight. I think, you know, as far as moving that generator down there, we could certainly make that decision, that doesn't cost us any money, other than, you know, we'll have to have some stuff for Mark to be able to have.
We'll have to put a shed on it, will we, Chris?
Well, I would cover it up with something, sure.
Yeah, and I know he's probably got a transfer switch, some, a little bit of rewiring on that pole down there, to make that work.
Yeah.
For the well number two and the treatment.
Yeah, and he, and he, uh, he said that we would have to get a transfer switch, it's got a, it's got an automatic transfer switch, but for some reason, he doesn't wanna use that, and I don't know exactly what that reason is.
They're gonna require an automatic.
Are they?
I'm sure they're, yeah, they're not, they're not gonna want you to have to go down there and manually kick it in, they're gonna want it to be automatic, I'm sure, if you look in the specs, it's gonna, it's gonna say auto, uh, auto switch.
Well, I can certainly check on that.
Yeah, I didn't know if that is about have to be or not, do you, Joe?
Well, sometimes, if you can explain the situation, they'll, they'll, they'll even allow you to do a, a one-on-trailer, you know, if you're going from one spot to the next, but, I think.
Want to take me or?
I think you have to guarantee then that you're gonna have somebody around that's.
No, we do have that on call.
If you don't have the automatic transfer and a generator that's just.
The way she explained it to me, you can't even, you gotta have the access lock from underneath the trailer. You can't have a.
Julie?
I thought they were pretty adamant about I was, having us have a stationary.
Stationary?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put it on a trailer, but you're gonna take the access option to them.
That's what I thought, they were pretty adamant, you had to have a stationary.
'Cause I know there's some towns that have done that, and I hope they got away with it.
I think you're probably right, Joe, I think in, in certain circumstances, they probably would.
Would allow it.
If that's the only thing that we could do, I think they would allow that. But I think since we've got this one here, I think we take it down there and set it there, but.
Kind of an old grail, man.
It's completely up to you guys.
Well, I think if you got it, and it's, and the work's big enough to power it, I would get used by the, well, even if you said it, if it's got the automatic transfer switch on it, or like that way, and it'll reset.
As much as we should have to use it.
Questions for Joe, council? Now's the time, 'cause he's sitting here. We talked about generators and railroad and everything, so any, I think, Gary, you got any?
I only, no, no idea, we're talking May, you think to start, if everything would go? As early as, probably.
As early as.
Well, that's.
I didn't check my calendar, I thought this was till May.
Yeah.
Be nice.
It was a short summer, isn't it, we're going right back.
Yeah, I think we're in the third year in this project, so it'd be kinda nice to get it done this year.
What year?
Third year, I wouldn't have been on. Two years, a fifth year.
Am I very far off, Joe? Franny, you got an open bid about five years, is that it?
Very close.
Rob, and Franny? Ron, any questions for?
Chris said we're gonna have to check, see whether we have to have automatic switch on them out, they're, they're nice, but what's the cost of one of them?
I wrote it out.
It's already in there.
She was like, that one, you're whacking.
Now, you said we gotta do something else, what was that?
You just don't wanna hook it up.
Oh, I thought there was something else you had to get.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good.
Okay. Appreciate it, Joe, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
I'll talk to you in July.
Okay.
Do you wanna, do you wanna have a vote on whether or not we take that generator down there, or do we just do it?
No, we, we can vote on it, 'cause I wanna make sure council's all in agreeance with it.
I'd make a motion that we use that big three K, that we had to put down there at the, the, uh.
Well, second.
Well, second.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to move the generator that we have down to the new well site, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay. Discuss, I put.
One more, one more project for you. Where are we putting? Mark wants to put it right by that pole. On the corner, like kitty-corner from that, 'cause that way he can, that way he can wire it into the treatment plant and to the wellhouse, both at the same time.
Okay, where you put the fuel tank?
I don't know that, we don't have a fuel tank for it.
This is something that'll have to be settled, I mean, moved down, and everything.
Probably move it down.
Put it on the side of the building, I think.
I mean, if you're pitching a pit about a.
Yeah.
Transformer, say, what, a two-hundred-foot?
Yeah, you're almost gonna have to have.
You're gonna have that fuel tank.
Fuel tank's gotta be contained, you're right.
Yeah.
Just have to put a six-inch curb on the building, just gonna build it, build it on top of that, and then put the fuel tank inside.
Yeah.
It's typically like a diesel generator.
Is there a tank out there, or?
No. I think they kept a tank, they, they use it on their pump for containment, the one that they put it down there, I think.
Eight inches of fuel.
I'm just, you know, I saw a couple generators out there, I'm just, what are we gonna do to us? We're putting a building on it.
Fuel tanks out of that.
Yeah. Let's move on to, uh, process to rezone lots, commercial recommendation by planning and zoning committee?
Yeah, the planning and zoning committee met, uh, last Tuesday at noon here, and they met to talk about the rezoning of lots, just kitty-corner from CPS there. Lots four and five, and lot eight, but nobody knows what the hell that means, so it's the two lots just north of CPS.
One of the first, surely.
Yeah, they're, they're empty, been empty for, we're trying to figure it out about nineteen seventy-eight or seventy-nine, I think, is one of those.
Seventy-nines, we tore the house down.
That's what, that's what Bill thought, um, and the, the planning and zoning commission didn't have any, uh, didn't have any issue with changing those, rezoning those lots, they thought it was a good idea, it'll, uh, increase the tax valuation for the city, so. They recommended that, that we change those lots, now, that doesn't mean that we have to do that, that means that you guys have to consider it. But we can't do anything tonight, because we have to hold a public hearing, we didn't have enough time to get the public hearing in the paper, so. This is just a for your information, and at the next meeting, we will have a public hearing to see if anybody's, has an issue with this, and then we'll be able to vote on it, so.
Well, that's the ones we have middle control on, the variances.
Board, board of adjustments, yeah, they can do special exceptions, and they can do variances, and.
Do we have to say that the council can't afford, or recommend that we?
No, no, at the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, and then we'll, and then we'll vote yea or nay, whether or not we wanna rezone the, the lots. So, Steve, that rezoning was just a for your information, we couldn't do anything at this meeting, because we didn't have enough time to get the public hearing notice in the paper.
That's correct.
So.
I wondered about that, I was gonna ask you about that, so.
We have a whole public hearing before we can do that.
Yeah, I figured that. Okay, any more discussion on that? Discuss approved alley survey by Kruger Surveying. You, Chris?
Yeah, this is something that we've talked about several times, and I'll just kinda leave that, I put it in there upside down for you.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah. Or are you gonna do it?
Price didn't change.
Did that?
Yeah.
I, you know, I just think this is something that we should either do or not do, I mean, if we're gonna do it, I think we should do it. 'Cause, I mean, if, if, if we start going forward with this electric project, and this thing holds up, then, you know, we really kinda shout ourselves in the foot.
We're pretty, pretty well gonna know where them poles are gonna go if we decide to do something.
Right, and if we get it done and get it put somewhere where we know where it is, and we got it.
Then we never have to do it again.
For the rest of our lives, I move that we accept this good and get this done. I'll second that.
Moved in second to approve the alley survey by Kruger Survey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passed. Discuss approve ordinance two thousand and fourteen. Discuss approve ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh one, an amendment to the ordinance of six, five, twelve, electric rates, specifically the demand rate.
Yeah, we've talked about this before, and, uh, last time we talked about it, we only had three councilmen, so we could only read it once. So tonight, with five, we can, we can read it again, and then we can waive the third reading, and finally approve this, uh, this ordinance, and. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, what I'm gonna read is what's gonna change. The ordinance reads now that demand will be billed at eight dollars per kilowatt, period. What we're gonna change it to is demand will be billed at eight dollars and forty-five cents per kilowatt in the winter. And eleven dollars and thirty cents per kilowatt in the summer. Winter months are October, November, December, January, February, March, April, and May, summer months are June, July, August, and September. And the reason why we're changing it is because that's what we get billed at in those months for demand.
Discussion?
You know, we're, we're paying for it, but the ones that are using it aren't paying for it, is that what you're saying?
Not as much as we are, we haven't passed it on as of yet, Rob.
That's what they've done, basically, is spread that demand charge out of my, I still send them away.
Well, I don't like that, it says.
Any other discussion?
I think it's something we have to do.
So then, so then if we're gonna make a motion, what we need to do is we need to make a, a motion to accept the second reading. And waive the third reading. And then, we'll vote on that, and then, uh, we have to make a motion to.
Accept the ordinance.
Yeah, finally accept the ordinance, who knows, Steve? So those have to be separate.
Yes. And those will be two roll call votes.
Thanks, Rob.
First, motion to accept the second reading and waive the third read, the third reading of the ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh one, motion please.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh one, and to waive the third roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Rob, Gary?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Now we need a motion to accept ordinance two thousand fourteen oh one. And finally approve it.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Albert? Seconded by Ron? Roll call vote? Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Franny?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Motion passed. Discuss and approve the pool manager's salary.
Hold on a second.
Yep, hold on.
We, uh.
We moved the rental property.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, that's right, that's right, we moved the, uh, the airport, yep, up to, uh, the first.
So I'm gonna open it right now, and obviously, we only got one, but these guys have had it the last couple of years, and, uh.
Who is it now, hillbilly, what?
No. Actually, actually, it just says Citywide Sweet Corn.
They're good people, but we got a better corn last year.
Well. We had to get a little water on it.
We need to get Leroy to think a little bit on this.
See, I don't think Leroy had much to do with this one this year.
Boy, that's disappointing.
Two hundred and fifty dollars an acre.
What was it last year?
Uh, I think it was three seventy-five, but if you would talk to Doug, I think they, uh.
Yeah, I know.
Probably didn't make much money on that.
Just cut the weeds down.
Yeah.
So, motion to accept the bid for the old airport?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to accept the, uh, bid for the airport for the ten acres, correct, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars an acre, huh? I wanted to see what Rob would say, oh, I got dirty, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
I abstained.
Okay, Franny abstains. Pool manager's salary, uh, got Amanda and Lindsay here to speak to the council.
Alright, guys. Okay, we have gotten together, um, Steve, Amanda, and myself, Amanda is now appointed, um, in place of Donna Aldagis. The rest of this year, um, for being on the pool board, and we went over, um, applications, and we also hired Megan Dross for the second year. And we had spoken with her, had a meeting with her, and she was, um, hoping to propose that she is, would be set on a set salary. For the summer months, she started, um, like last week until the middle of August, which is nineteen weeks. And she is CPO, WSI, and lifeguard certified, and she was asking for just a flat rate of nine thousand for the whole summer. Last year, we ran into a lot of times when she would clock in, and she would have a lot of hours over. We don't pay overtime, we had to pay her overtime, it was just a nonstop thing, because we had a lot of kids in sports, and just a lot of things at the pool. We're hope, you know, we still want her to clock in and keep her hours that way, but with her being a, the CPO. A WSI, and also can do lifeguarding, um, it comes out to be about eleven eighty-four an hour, if you split it out through the whole nineteen weeks, yep. Um, last year, last year hourly, um. Last year hourly, she was at ten seventy-five an hour, um, for her first year manager, and.
Grossed out at?
Um, she had six thousand nine thirty-seven ninety. And then Robin, like two years ago, she had, um, she was at seven thousand, and that was. Out of two years, it was kind of an average of both years.
Questions, council?
Yeah, I don't know anybody that got a twenty-eight percent raise last year, this year.
I mean, that's just what she proposed to me, and I said I would bring it, bring it to council, so.
And that's what she's asking for, is basically twenty-eight percent. And I think that's mortaring on insane. You know, everybody else, we discussed it on our city wages, or.
But she puts in forty plus, I mean, she's over forty hours, and her, I mean, her certifications are what we have to have.
She needs the certifications to have the job.
Right.
That's, it doesn't matter when we're in nothing, I mean, you know, I, I just think that.
Both averaging out at eleven eighty-four an hour. We have our, yeah, it's a dollar.
For our help, it's down to about four percent, if you put four percent on that, seven thousand roughly, it'd be a two hundred and eighty dollar raise. I don't think we can, in my opinion, we, we gotta treat all the help the same kinda, and I think, uh. Four percent raise on top of seven is, would be probably in line with, with the rest of the help that, what they got in this town this year. Now, whether she's worth more or not, I don't know, but that's just my opinion now.
Franny?
Well, I definitely don't think there's, she's not that good, two hundred and a dollar or something an hour raise, and we don't even give our own employees that, full-time employees. You know, a couple of issues I have is, you know, I've been asking this for probably three years now, I want a, a balance sheet, when we buy candy. I wanna see the sales of it, and for at least three years, I haven't seen a dog gosh darn thing, so.
It's gotten better last year.
It probably has, but I, I haven't seen nothing.
Yes, I understand.
I, I watched the money go in, but I never see nothing go out, but I never see nothing coming in, so.
She turned in a spreadsheet, and I don't know, I mean, cause I have a spreadsheet on an email that I, I received.
I handed it all to council, I printed it all.
So I mean, there was a spreadsheet that showed lost teams, it showed all the memberships, I think it was close to six thousand dollars on memberships, um.
There was a sheet someplace, I don't know where.
I, I have one, and I can, I can get you all that.
I don't remember, but that doesn't mean.
Yeah. No, and like I said, I'm just proposing that, and I don't, you know, if we just do, um. At eleven dollars an hour, you know.
Now, I don't know what's, what's good, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Look at what.
Yep.
See where I'm coming from? See where I'm coming from? Trying, gotta keep it fair with the.
Right, right.
With the rest of the help, so.
And I guess maybe that was just a starting to throw it out there, um, we also wanted to get your idea, um, after talking to Steve, what even is your guys' idea on the salary part of it versus, you know, the set rate hourly? Cause I know Steve has said no overtime, but what, you know, what happens when? That has to, has to happen, we just wanna get your idea.
It's not happening that has to happen, and we've gotta do a few more things.
I, I would say that, uh.
I mean, Chris is in the same boat, he gets paid a salary, and he's gotta get the job done, puts a lot of good time.
You can, if, 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 memory serves me correctly, you can get paid a salary, but you have to be over a certain number of employees, correct, Franny? Which, she would qualify.
Sure.
She would definitely qualify, so that means that you, you don't have to worry about the overtime.
Oh, that, that's what I, yeah, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, if you're receptive to having a salary, but still having her clock in and out, so you can see that she is working the minimum, you know, or Lindsay. Yeah, by Lindsay saying that most weeks she.
How does, how does that work?
Over forty weeks anyway.
How does that work, Franny? If you're salaried, but you still work, cause it's like you and me, you still work over the forty, it doesn't, doesn't count.
It doesn't matter, I mean, you're saying for me, it doesn't matter, we, we just talked about having her clock in and out.
President's talking about this now, too, he thinks that you're a poor abused individual, I said, if you don't want the job, don't take it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know, that's what I say, cause I've been in that situation, too, I was a supervisor, and he packed, I know exactly what you're talking about, and, you know, if you don't want the job, don't do it, that's the way.
But I think that's where she was like, you know, I have to be there because I'm the only WSI person, so she had to be there for swimming lessons morning, and then she, you know, the, the swimming lessons for two weeks.
Anybody else?
We have one other lifeguard that is going to be getting their WSI, but we're waiting for that certification to.
I thought we're going to kinda enforce that.
With her it is, so we're waiting for the certification.
For everybody to try and get their WSI.
And Megan, Megan did tell them that she encouraged them, but we can't, we can't.
Yeah, we can't force them, but we.
Because it's three hundred and some dollars.
Well, several years ago, I thought that was required, Molly did it as a requirement.
Did Molly have her WSI?
I thought so.
I, I don't think Molly had her WSI, she just had her, I mean, I, I can double check, but the WSI is, I mean, I.
Well, we're gonna table this as of right now, but you're gonna have to go back to her and say, listen, council says no on the nine, I mean. Come back with a reasonable figure, which you.
Well, I think we got a reasonable figure.
All right, yeah, council's got a reasonable figure, you're gonna have to go back and shoot her.
We're talking about seventy-two hundred and eighty dollars, that's what we're.
I just, I just rounded off at seven to four, but.
I mean, I can either do a salary, or tell her it'd be like eleven dollars an hour flat, forty hours, or salary, you know, at.
I would just as well go with the flat salary at seventy-two forty, or seventy-two eighty, seventy-two eighty, is that what you'd come up with, Gary?
Me, uh, seventy-two, seventy-two eighty would be.
See if she'll accept that?
That'd be, uh, that's a little better than four, but not much. He didn't say it, but.
Seven thousand times four percent is two eighty, seventy-two eighty.
Right.
That'd be three hundred and eighty dollars.
So.
I don't know what that figure off her salary for.
Well, they said it was sixty-nine, it's almost seven thousand.
And tell her that's all the best council will do.
Well, that would give you about, uh. About fifty cents an hour, give or take.
So.
Oh, close.
Right.
Not at your own salary.
Don't even talk about that.
You can't talk about our salary.
Well, what she was getting her.
Cause when I was working on that, if I had put it in eighty hours, I'd have put it in eighty hours.
Yeah, you don't, you don't know what the overtime could have been.
No.
Yeah, so, if anything, they're leaning, they're leaning towards a salary at seventy-two eighty, or a quarter raise. Which would put her to eleven, Lindsay. With no overtime on the hourly.
Okay, and then you guys wanna, want me to read off the guards that we've hired?
If you would, please.
Okay. Um, our guards this year, we have Jalen Peters, Lexi Wilson, Morgan Grossley, Emily Dross, um, Connor Grody. Ashton Bloom, Maddie Bloom, Mary Bloom, Emma Mortensen, and Amanda Stein. Yes, and Amanda Stein Camp, Amanda Stein Camp will be the head guard with the WSI.
We can do that one more time.
Yep. Jalen Peters, Lexi Wilson, Morgan Grossley, Emily Dross, Connor Grody. Ashton Bloom, Maddie Bloom, Mary Bloom.
So what are we gonna do in the Blooms move?
Or screw it, go to seas.
Good, I have to get some more competition in down there.
Did you get Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Emma Mortensen, and then Amanda Stein Camp will be our head guard with the WSI.
So ten?
Yep, and then Megan.
We changed this over, hiring college kids again?
The only reason we hired her back is, is.
Cause we're changing the rules.
No.
That's the only reason, yeah.
We did.
I mean, this is, I got a bone to pick with you here, I mean, this is a sore subject with me.
Yeah, I know it is.
Well, then why are you changing it?
Because the rest of the applicants that applied were also that way, there was, uh. From like you, uh.
Sidney Merle?
Sidney Merle, and, and the only way we could get this to work was we had to have ten to get the hours, because of baseball, and, and all the. The athletics going in, so we could get everybody evened out, so we decided to go with Amanda Stein Camp.
I disagree with that. Put your rule in a few years ago, now you're not gonna abide by that, or you're gonna change it, I guess, so.
And I wasn't around when.
It doesn't matter, you got rules to live by, and then, you know, now you're changing it, so I, this is.
I don't.
As far as I'm concerned.
I don't know if those rules were written in stone, Rob?
They sure applied that year.
See, that's before my time.
No, it wasn't.
That was.
I was.
It wasn't before you were mayor.
Yes, it was. Yeah, I wasn't on when your daughter. Applied, so. How long's your daughter been out?
Doesn't matter, you guys do what you want. I have nothing to say about it. I mean, actually, we have to approve all the lifeguards anyways, Wisconsin, we're city employees.
Motion to approve.
Also move, we approve all these lifeguards that the board picked.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept lifeguards as proposed, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, moving on.
Thanks, council.
David?
Okay, I've got two items for you for the crater edition in the north side of town, first item is, uh, change order number two. I, I really have a copy of that.
I'm backwards in here, guys. Change order number two is on, uh. Page thirteen.
I believe. Yep.
Okay, change order two, what happened here was when we did the storm sewer uh, design for this project, we started out at the dam, uh, Sixth Street there, south side of Sixth Street, had the storm sewer running up that west property line to serve the addition. And in going to install that storm sewer, we potted all the utilities that were at Sixth Street and the storm sewer was in conflict with the water main and the force main that are out there. We were hoping that they were five and a half foot deep as they are supposed to be. They were not. So we were not able to go over the top of them. And you can't raise the storm sewer up or you can't serve your addition, so we had to go deeper and go below them. That increased the depth of the intakes and the depth of the sewer for the first couple hundred foot run. And that is the added cost that King came up with at four thousand, forty-one dollars and forty cents. The increased depth of the sewer and the increased depth of the intakes. And that was the cheapest alternative to fix this was to just lower the storm sewer in lieu of rerouting the force main and rerouting the water main around it. So that was done actually last fall once we potted all the utilities. Questions?
Is it our fault that, uh, we didn't get it figured right? Is it the city's fault that, that they didn't check, didn't get that?
Well, we, we don't know the depths of these until we go and dig them up. And we didn't, nobody digs them up until we're going to, into construction. And we, we work on the assumption that the water lines are at the five foot, the force main are at the five foot depth, you know, that they're supposed to be for cross depth. They were not.
Yeah, I understand that.
So once we got that all found, the only option was to lower the storm sewer to go underneath all those lines. It was cheaper than rerouting the force main and the water line around the storm sewer. The only way to have resolved that ahead of time would be to dig them up before we ever designed the project.
So you're talking four thousand dollars for that couple hundred feet now?
Yeah, and for the increased depth of the intakes. They had to buy extensions for the intakes and I did get a breakdown from him. He had a, he lists the machine hours, the man hours and the extra materials, the vertical feed of structures. The amount of time they lost on site working on this, I felt the number was good for going down two and a half feet. If it was in his, if we would have known the depth and had it designed that deep, his price would have been higher to reflect that.
You have to make a motion to accept this change and move and accept this change order. I'll second that.
Moved in second to accept change order work number two, Goderson Smith Construction. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Franny?
Yeah.
Albert?
Yeah.
Ron? Okay, number three.
Second item is pay application number three. This is for the work they've, a little bit of work they've completed this spring and it does include the change order two. That's why we wanted you to approve that first.
That's on page eleven.
Yeah, you can go back up a page.
Yeah.
Amount of work that they have completed is, uh, you'll be paying them six thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. The only work that is left for King Construction, which is Goderson Smith's sub, is the water services and he is going to board those after the street is in. So he's not going to over trench them across the road.
Right.
That'll, that is the payment for now and then we.
Is that going to cost us anymore?
No, they, they have been informed of that. If they decide to board it, it's at their expense. And they can open credit right now if they want it. And he's well aware that that's at his expense if it costs him more. It's better. They don't have to worry about compaction of the road, but it is at his cost. So the pay application is for six thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Does, uh, King need to make the cuts for the road or is that Goderson Smith going to do that?
The grading?
Yeah.
That is Goderson Smith's other so.
Okay.
And they, I talked with Kim Triggs about that. Their plan is to start doing the dirt cuts in about a week and a half, two weeks. Paving in May, assuming it doesn't be snowing.
They're going to do what now?
They'll start working on grading in a couple of weeks and paving in May, off the addition.
How much time are you going to give us? We, we need to get some pipes and we need what they're going to do.
Tell me what you need.
Just conduit. That's what we're going to need.
Can you put it in now? Or do you want to wait till the road's?
Oh, and after it's graded, so we can get it.
Exactly, it's graded, okay. That don't want to take you a couple of days, right?
Yeah, we need to, for, uh, to run the, have the gas lines, let her use and electrical. That's what we're looking for.
Let me know, I'll let you know when, well, you'll know when they're graded. You'll see it and then we'll just work with you.
Okay.
I mean, very rarely are they here the next day that it's ready. Of course, this time it will be because we want a couple of days in between, but.
I know they're going to have to come back too. When they get it graded, we'd like to lay them in here so we don't have to cut the road or anything.
Right, yep.
Have that on the council. And it's just a couple of blocks.
We'll work with you on that.
Okay.
We'll have time.
Right.
Any other questions about the project itself?
Well, I'd be able to pack that, we got to pack that dirt tight enough, put that cement in.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
That grader out there by the highway, you know, that's, there's a lot of grates going in there.
There is a lot of fill. We, uh, they do put it in in six to twelve inch lifts and we take tests on every lift. Moisture and density tests. We get the results.
Looks like we're going to have to move a couple sheds there because it don't look like they're going to get that road through right now.
Amazing what you do with the dozer.
It's, it's tight, but it fits.
You know what I mean? If you like that word, you've checked that for sure, Franny.
It's tight, but it fits. There's like a, I can't remember what the right way was through there. It was smaller than usual, was it fifty, forty-five feet? Yeah, we're usually, we're usually around sixty feet on our new addition.
Yeah, normally we're sixty feet.
Yeah.
But we've got, we've got a guy doing some storage on our lot there.
Oh, right, yeah. There's stuff parked in there.
We're not charging for that.
You haven't charged me any of that, no. Yes, I'll pay application three.
Moved in second to approve application pay request number three from Goderson Smith Construction. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Franny?
Yes.
Albert?
Yeah.
Ron?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
How long will it take them to do that, Dave?
The grading will take them probably two weeks. Obviously, weather plays a big part in grading.
Sure does.
And then paving, they can do that in probably a week. You know, it's a one straight shot.
Yeah.
Plus the intersections.
Yeah.
I should say two straight shots. But when you have open dirt like that in May, it plays, rain plays a lot of role around.
We need some moisture. It gets up and settle.
How much did you get?
It's three, I had my gauge.
That's my gun, it's inch two, so.
Inch four, I had in mine.
Pretty consistent. Thank you.
Thank you.
You missed.
Thank you.
Uh, approved clerks report, Chris?
Oh, boy. Yeah, so, uh, first page, page fourteen. As you can see, the, the way we get to our forty-one thousand, seven fifty-four there at the end. Proceeds, payments, payroll, transfer to savings. That transfer to savings has, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars in it that we, that we had swept out of our account when our hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar gas bill went through. That's why that transfer's so big. Got any questions? Let me know. Uh, so page fifteen is a little different than you guys have seen in the past. Uh, we talked about having, adding some, uh, some accounts at the back. And I'm working on getting that to look right on here. It's, I'd say ninety percent right right now. You see the road use fund and the revenue sinking bond and the endowment. Uh, those three are all new. I just got those set up last week. And, uh, the, the amounts that are in there are right, right now. But those will be changing. The road use one will change every month a little bit. Uh, the revenue sinking bond, I put too much money in that. Um, that's, that's the fund that we have to pay our, uh, revenue bonds out of and we've only got one revenue bond. I put enough money to pay all of our bond principal payments in there, so I got to get that moved out and that'll go into our debt service account.
That's, that's the change.
That'll change a little bit. Doesn't change the totals at the bottom at all. Just money, money change of hands. In the bank account, so. Nothing really else to point out there.
How many more will you have to add here, Chris?
How many more will we add here, Franny? Um, maybe one, but maybe not any more than, than what we've got now. Because we've already got a debt service fund. We've always had that. We just have a new bank account at the bank. We've, we've always had a TIF fund. We just got a TIF bank account at the bank now. So, I can't tell you. Maybe one Franny, but that may be about it. And then some, that bond payment fund at the bottom, some money will change hands out of that and, and probably one of our other savings accounts. But, this is, this is pretty close and I'll just continue to work on it and get it better. Nothing on there really other, otherwise grabs my attention. The savings wind turbine, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We got a bill today. We didn't get a bill. We got a bid today. Our wind generator put down since Thursday. And we broke, uh, one, two, three, four, four pages worth of parts. The parts come to roughly ten thousand dollars and the work, uh, the labor comes to roughly ten thousand dollars. So it's a twenty thousand dollar bill.
So what happened to it?
Well,
What was it to?
Uh, good question. Let me see if I can find the part in here that broke. Uh, it's called a composite disc. There's two of them in there. And they're, uh, they're fiberglass and can't tell you exactly what they do, but what happened was they just completely shattered. And when they shattered, they broke some other parts. But the guy who generally comes down and works on it said that we got by pretty lucky because he's seen it blow through the sides and break several fifty thousand dollar worth of stuff. So we got relatively lucky, even though we still got a twenty thousand dollar bill. And this isn't actually a bill. This is a quote that they think may fix it, so.
But he doesn't know what caused it?
It's just wear and tear.
Or else?
Yeah.
In other words, a guy should probably change that every so often.
Every ten years, well, that's like.
Every ten years, we're going to change that. Well, they got all these little sensors on there. It's supposed to shut it down whenever there's a little owie.
And he said, he said that it's a really good thing that we had those sensors on there because the brakes actually weren't working because of this, but it, but it got it locked in place where it wasn't spinning when it was blowing fifty mile an hour this last weekend. So he said that could have been a really bad deal. But, the way he talks, we got lucky.
Well, we haven't had much expense for the last ten years overall, so we can't say.
Yeah, a few, you know, a few, uh, things here and there.
Yeah.
Generally, when I get these emails, you know, there's a, they say we, we got to come down and fix this part. It's a couple thousand dollars. And I send it back, I sign it and send it back to them. And then we present that bill at the next council meeting. But, I don't want to do that with this one until you guys okay it. And I don't necessarily know how we okay it in this meeting because we don't have it on the, have it on the agenda.
We don't know the exact figures total either, probably, huh?
Yeah.
If that is a figure, you think that is, but it's not a good figure.
I'd say it'd be pretty bogus. I don't know, I mean. There's.
Well, they sit down.
It's costing us money. It's down. It's going to cost us money, but.
Right.
So, you know, and all that's this meeting.
To approve or have a special meeting.
Well, I, I mean, you guys can just tell me that you're okay with it right now and I will.
I have to go ahead.
I wouldn't think so. You got to do it. I mean, you can't have it set.
When we do this, then I, I'm going to take the twenty thousand dollars out of our savings account for that. Is that all right with you guys?
Okay.
Yeah, so I will send that back to them tomorrow and then they'll be down here. And it, I mean, it's a, it's a whole week's worth of work. It looks like to me, fifty hours apiece, so uh, it's going to take them pretty much all week to get it done.
I'm going to crawl up there and monitor them.
He actually, he actually wants somebody to be able to crawl up there because he said if we had somebody that could crawl up there, he would have known that what they came down here to fix today wasn't actually what was broken. It was all this stuff, so.
Mark can't clap anymore.
But he, he said something about a young person going up there, so.
So you're saying I'm old?
I didn't say anything, Franny.
He might just get up there and have a heart attack.
Well, he got three tears in his tongue, taking breaks.
I didn't say that at all, Franny.
It's not that bad to cry.
We got a young hobby here can handle that.
Okay, let's, let's get back to the clerk's report here and, uh, we can move on to page, page sixteen is the first page of the, of the general fund and really nothing too big to explain on here, other than, uh, you know, we got some taxes in last month. We got a whole bunch of them in just, uh, last week, so that'll, you'll see that here on this, on the next clerk's report. Next page, I mean, basically, guys, this is the same thing that we see every month. Page nineteen. I've got another one over there. Uh, other than the pool renovation expense and what that was, was the.
Concrete, right.
That's the, uh, pool lift chair. We got a grant for that, so that really didn't cost us. Cost the city any money, so. That's going to be a thing. Cemetery expense, that'll start going up. If we quit snowing. Dave doesn't think it's going to quit snowing.
Can you do me a favor, Chris?
Really, for each, we get over it.
Can you check into the surrounding cemetery to see what likely we charge is in?
For lots or?
Yeah, for lots. Yeah, for lots.
They charge it there?
Two fifty.
Barry, you may want that, huh?
I think we'd be a little shy of that, but I'll check. I think it goes a little higher than that. I'm not sure.
You know, people dying to get in here.
Sexy.
Page twenty, Gary, and, uh, nothing really big there, other than, uh, the insurance at forty-six thousand, six hundred. That's going to get divvied out into, uh, into several different accounts in our gas and electric and, and water will, will eat up the majority of that. So, that'll be a little bit of a change. Road use fund. This is another one that we've always had, Franny. So, so we had three of the funds that we had to get. Uh, the auditor wanted us to get. We added three to the front page. I think there were seven total accounts that I'm, that I added, so there may be one other one that we have to add to the front page, but that, that would be just about it, so. And what I need to change, what I was talking about earlier, what I need to change is, is every month we get this seventy-six, eighty-four, whatever the number is, it's not always that. But we, we get that automatically put into our account and it automatically is going into our general fund right now. I need to get that changed so it automatically goes into the road use fund. Yeah. And then we'll transfer out of the road use fund into our general fund, uh, because that's where we pay the bills from, so.
Basically, we're sending thirty-four thousand dollars in our road use fund now?
Well, no, that was the beginning fund balance. The ending is forty-five thousand.
Okay, that's our any fund, okay.
So if you want to spend all that, Gary, let's do it.
Well, we got to look over the roads a little bit in case they need some work because there's some on, on our streets. We get, well, maybe we shouldn't spend it all, but we should, should look over our roads and see if they need something.
Yeah. Uh, next page, TIF. We're still getting commercial tip. We're still getting commercial tip money in. We're in, uh, in about a month, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to pay some of that out to Cooks Cookies and Corn Belt. Their, their agreements again. Got about four years left on those. And we got a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in that one, Gary. Debt service, that doesn't change much. We should, that should change a lot here this next month, because we should have got a pretty good chunk. That should just about wipe that negative ten thousand out. I don't remember what that number was. Do you remember exactly what that was, man?
Which one?
Debt service. And you probably got several of them, so. Oh, shit. Just forget page twenty-four, because I didn't print the right thing. Um, electric fund, you can see that ninety-three thousand dollars in our purchase of electricity. That's a month and a half of purchases. So next month will be a little short of that. But I will tell you that in our revenues, we doubled up on a, um, on our, uh, automatic deposits. So we've got an extra thirty-five thousand dollars in that hundred and twenty-one thousand up there. So it would be roughly ninety-some thousand, eighty-five thousand, let's say. So instead of making twenty-three thousand, we actually lost money in that fund. But the reason why we did that is because we have a month and a half worth of electric purchases, so.
Where was that?
Why do we have a, a month and a half worth of electric? Just because of when we got the bills and when we had to pay them.
I don't get it. Is, is, do they just come consistently every month?
Yeah, but our, uh, council meetings don't fall consistently each month. They're, they're the second. Second Monday and the, and the fourth Monday, but if you recall, last month was really late. This month's gonna be really late, so we don't get the bills paid. Or we get them after, the day after we have a council meeting, so we have to wait till the next month, so. Yeah, they may come consistently within a few days, but that doesn't mean that we always pay them on the same exact day, so. But next month, so next month we'll have a thirty thousand dollar electric bill instead of a ninety thousand dollar electric bill and we'll make all that money back, so. It's not like we actually.
Martin line doesn't change that much?
No. Doesn't.
We'll just hold it to that next month. It doesn't seem like it ever comes back.
We'll have to watch it.
I heard it.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it ever comes back.
Don't you have some more to add? Okay, so let's see. We're at a hundred and eighteen thousand. I'm at right.
Right there down.
No, it, it will change though. And then. We'll see, I guess. So natural gas fund and, uh, that one is, is doing pretty well now since, uh, pretty cold, you know.
So did natural, I heard cost of natural gas go back down after the little bump here?
Yeah, it went down, uh, not as much as I thought it would, but it went down to, uh, dollar seventeen. From a dollar was a dollar thirty-seven, so, yeah, it went down, but. It should go down again. It should get under a dollar. I would think this month. But I don't know that for sure. But honestly, it doesn't matter what our cost is. We still pass that along, so.
Not asking as a citizen, no. Not as a councilman.
Yeah. Hopefully your bill will go down.
Because my household was the highest one ever had.
Yeah, and me too.
I do.
Well, if it gets his way, it's gonna be a hell of a lot higher, so you better just hang onto your hat.
Yeah, and I, we heard, we heard a lot about it. I mean, there was a lot of people concerned about the gas price, gas prices and that's something that we just can't control. We can control it to a point because we have storage, but you can't pull all the storage out in one month. So we have just a, a certain amount of control over it. And this winter's been bad. Our water fund is good, though.
Yeah.
Cause we only got one well.
There's tons of that water.
It's expensive to spend one well.
And our sewer just looks terrible.
Just look at it. What are you gonna have, that second well?
Yeah, what are we gonna do with it?
Watergate.
Might have to sell it to.
Rick found a water, Rick found a water this last week. So that'll help. So it won't be pumping it in.
Pretty sizable one?
Huh?
Pretty sizable one?
He thought it was pretty good size. It was up at the complex. By the tennis courts, so. We'll see how that goes. Sewer. I mean, it's getting better, but it's still not good at all. Just, we're not gonna recover from that extra forty thousand dollars I've been spending this year. And we're still not done yet. If George gets out of Jefferson, gets over here, he'll spend another ten thousand dollars in that account. Uh, and the garbage, you know, that one's, that one's getting better. Uh, that's gonna be a slow process to get it to where it used to be.
About ten years, maybe?
Well, we may, you know, at some point in time, we may just zero that out, take some money out of one account. Uh, electric or gas, whatever, zero this one out and start new. I don't know. That's something we can talk about, but. Doesn't have to be done. Haven't been running that way for years, so. You guys have any questions? You can see all the, all the shacks that we wrote. And all the money that we got in, really just, you know, pretty much a normal amount. Other than the three bills to the electric company, Rob. What'd you guys think about that email I sent out about what Mean told me? Yeah, he was a bunch of, a bunch of smoke. Basically, what he told me was that they can control some things, but they can't control most of the stuff. And one of the things that they can't control is natural gases. Much cheaper to make electricity with right now than coal. And, uh, that they have a coal plant and so when they, if they have extra electricity, which they generally do. When they sell it, they make it for ten dollars. They sell it to Franny for eleven or for nine. So they're losing that dollar for every kilowatt that they sell. So when they do that, then they have to charge their members for that.
That's basically it. I think they won't smoke.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a council here if we did that at a council meeting like that, that operated.
Yeah.
I mean.
Or business. And I don't know what options we have. I mean, as far as it goes right now, they, they can basically bill us whatever they wanna bill us. I mean, they have that written into the contract and there's nothing we can do about that. That doesn't mean we can't get out of the contract.
So we don't want next month to try another four thousand or maybe not, huh?
Yeah, I don't, they don't.
Hard to tell.
Yeah, they don't tell us. They don't want us.
I would, uh.
That's for sure.
Go back to pursuing this R E C deal again. And that kind of, it was coming home to start with and it kinda died off for some reason.
Yeah.
We might be there in America too, Franny. Never hurts to check sometimes.
I can certainly check.
I think your R E C will be higher.
Could be.
Cause most of the R E Cs, uh, it's, it's higher than what you are now.
We used to think that America was getting to us, but I think it's kinda turned around. You never know.
That American's coming back strong. Lakeview's going up by fifteen percent a year.
Yeah, they just raised ours and I just want to build out and they're cheaper than we are straight across the line.
I know, because the last five years.
No, they just raised all, they just raised her.
They didn't raise all one. If it waited another five years, it'll be more than.
Don't forget, we're gonna have to raise ours too, Rob. That's a hell of a.
I was telling you, Gary. They had a, that America had a freeze for four or five years after Warren Buffett bought the place, but they couldn't raise their rates.
That's how come they went up so much now, because of that freeze.
Recovered.
Don't take means as a.
I don't.
They're all going to, Gary. If, if they gotta switch to natural gas, these coal plants, we're screwed.
Well, it just, it never hurts to check on this thing once in a while.
He's screwing us royally. I don't care what you say. He wants to wreck us and he's doing a good job. He's gonna get her done. Trystine, everything's gonna go up.
I don't have any else.
Any questions for Chris on clerk's report?
I'd make a motion to approve the clerk's report.
Second?
Oh, second.
Move in second to accept the clerk's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Discuss the new accounting software?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Lynn did a really good job of writing this out. So if you guys have some questions, I'm gonna let you ask her.
All right. And we just talked about at the last meeting, currently we have power manager for our utility billing, software only. And we talked about purchasing their accounting system and their payroll system so that the programs could interface and save us time. And so I just typed up some of the benefits.
What are you on now, Lynn?
Uh, DAC.
DAC easy is called.
Yep. And so this just outlines some of the, I guess, tomorrow, Thursday, you know, you read it. Just outlines some of the benefits of having the whole entire package in the one system. And then I included some emails from surrounding cities, their clerks that have the whole package and what their thoughts are as far as support and, and how easy it is to use, I guess, so.
Lynn, how much more is it than what we're paying now?
Fourteen hundred dollars a year.
The difference is about a hundred some dollars a month.
It was a, it's much easier and more secure.
We've got the less chance of making a mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then to go find that mistake after you've been in sometimes is.
Yeah, more than.
I think one of the biggest things is the, uh, support, the tech support.
I've seen that, yeah.
I mean, there's two guys, the way it sounds to me, there's two guys and they are in the building and you call down there and very seldom do you not be able to get ahold of them. And talk to them and they have your problem fixed within, usually within an hour, if not within ten minutes. And, uh, that, that is a really good, when you're talking about doing what we're doing. Within, in the course of an hour, when you have a problem, in the course of an hour, you can have five or six people come in here, talk to you about five or six or fifty different things. You can get a couple of phone calls and then you just completely lost where you're at. They don't call you back.
Well, in addition to that, I have, um, you can email in a question and clerks from all over towns will respond to your email and help you out or give you suggestions or tell you what they do.
So that's almost it, I guess.
Yeah, and their support is good with helping us with the accounting side too, but it's not their system, you know? Whereas if we had their accounting system, they know the insides and.
Well, this is something you just can't switch over today, right? It's gonna take a little.
Actually, Albert, I'm not excited about this at all.
It's gonna take a while to switch it over.
It's something that we've been talking, Lynn and I have been talking about since she got here. Tony and I talked about it when she was here. I'm just not at all excited about it, but I think it's something that we should probably do.
Well, definitely sounds like something that, uh, we can, the whole system can talk to each other. It's.
Yeah. And it's an extra hundred bucks more, so.
Chris, I talked to Katie over there. You know, they got, like, you can pay with credit card over there, but you don't pay for free. When you run the credit cards, they, they're about, they're plus four dollars to their bill.
Yeah.
So you, you can do it with a credit card, but you, they actually charge the customer four dollars to do that transfer. So this could work down the road.
I would really like to see that.
I think, I think you'll see the credit card system coming in.
You think, Lynn, that if.
I said we should do it now, but, you know.
If we offered the credit card availability to pay some of our bills, that we wouldn't get so behind in delinquencies?
I think so.
Yeah. That would help us there.
I do, and I think they're currently working on that right now if they don't have it in place, but I do.
Working on it, but I, I think, uh, I mean, I think you'd see at least fifty percent right up the top.
Really?
Oh, yeah, at least. I'd say even closer to seven.
We can go up three percent or fifty percent, because the credit card company charges three percent.
But Lakeview tags it on the bill.
Four dollars.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, a bill, that's not three percent.
No.
No. I don't know what the loss or take is.
That's what I get charged.
Yeah, three percent.
I get three percent. I get twenty-five cents on a debit card. That's a good point. So I think, you know, there's a lot of places that if you use a credit card, you gotta pay the three percent.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And just say, if you wanna pay it by credit card, you're paying the three percent.
Cause that's the way.
Or even a minimum deposit.
Yeah.
No, they, they have even minimum deposit, at least eight percent.
It could be a loss, it could be a loss on time if you don't get the three percent, because that adds up.
Well, you know, I don't know that it would be a loss. I think the ninety-seven percent that you're gonna get is, is gonna be better than the three percent. I mean, I don't think that's gonna be any expense.
Why can't you put in there though, if, if you use a credit card, we're gonna tax on it additional charge?
Yeah, I don't think that would bother anybody, honestly.
They don't. They usually don't bother me.
Cause usually you gotta do that, you know, you gotta pay that in.
Well, right now, this won't, this won't, uh, work anyway, right?
Gotta use this system.
They don't, they don't have the credit card capabilities right now.
This system does?
Not, not yet.
Coming in the near future then?
Well, I don't know. Let's not say near. She's, the lady that, that runs this or, or, you know, manager has not said, you know, next, next.
Remodels her.
She hasn't said that.
There are some companies out there though that specialize in that credit card service and they can come in and work with you.
Oh, sure.
And actually, most of the time, those are cheaper than.
Yeah, I know Bank Midwest can do it because that's how we didn't have it over at the restaurant, because they said they could do it, but I said I didn't want to put the expense up.
There's a lot of banks that charge for, be like five hundred or two, but if it's enough buy-in and you'd be have plenty to buy, I don't think you'd have any charge.
And theirs wasn't that much, if I remember, I'd not like going to a regular credit company.
Well, I just think if you, if it's gonna offset the delinquencies, you're gonna be money a head right there, right then. Franny, your thoughts?
Yeah.
Well, something to look into.
Does council wanna vote on this tonight?
Yeah.
To upgrade the.
Being Chris don't like it, I think we should give him some more. He don't have nothing to do anyhow, so I need to. I make a motion that we approve this.
New accounting software? Second?
At a cost now.
Yeah.
Fourteen hundred.
Thirteen something.
Actually, fourteen seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, that's cause we're mean.
Fourteen seventy-nine.
It cost a fourteen seventy-nine.
Second?
I'll second that.
They moved and seconded to approve the new accounting system, software, at a cost of fourteen seventy-nine extra per year.
They moved and seconded to approve the new accounting system software at a cost of fourteen seventy-nine extra per year, is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passed. Discuss nuisance abatement junk cars. Chris?
Yeah, I, uh, I had a request to put this on here, and, um, I actually haven't seen the cars yet, but. Been told that there are some real close to this vicinity, and, um, I don't know, Gary, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Well, I just told Ronnie I was gonna do my money, and there, there's some cars and some, uh, few that need to be, uh, kinda taken care of, I think. Been sitting there in the yard, sitting right in the yards for six months at a time, don't, I don't, they're sitting in somebody's yard, do they have to move them?
If they have a license on them, I don't think.
Can you do anything?
I think you can, I mean, ask them, I think you can ask them.
Yeah, there's just a few around, not many, but something we can, probably should try to get cleaned up, be wherever to clean up for the city.
Well, how did that work, Franny, when we tried to get Doc to, he had insurance on it, and he had current plates on it?
He had to, he had to physically move it.
Every so long.
He moved every six months.
Yep, it's gotta, it's gotta move somehow.
Now, now they're sitting in people's yards and kinda, sure don't make the, the town look good when you got cars sitting everybody's. Now, a normal town, they gotta be sitting on cement. A lot of towns.
I think we have a little getting, Morgan says, is it?
I think we did.
They'd be sitting on a hard surface.
I think we have.
Not just the car trailers, any of them, campers. Campers?
But, uh. Campers have to be sitting on hard surface?
I think it is, yeah, cords.
Gravel, concrete.
Just not in the middle of your yard. I mean, need a middle yard, only you got a surface for it.
Yeah, I usually got two pretty close to me, and they're usually something gravel or hard surface.
Well, there's one at the, uh, old Mike Cave place, that just sits in the grass.
No, that guy moved up to his mother's house now.
So it sits behind me, or, yeah. And they've always parked in the backyard for years and years and years.
That'll need to be put on list anyway. Whole place.
Any more concern about the nuisance junk cars?
I think some of them are kinda, you can get dumb.
What, what are we gonna do?
I don't, we do what our ordinance tells us to do, that's all we can do.
Yeah, that they gotta have license date on there.
License and insurance, I believe, if that's correct, Franny? I, license and insurance, I know. And then Rob says they'd have to be moved every six months.
They gotta move.
So that means the vehicle's gotta be started and moved. It can't be just pulled or towed or anything. So you would, would, would council like, Chris, to just call these people and say, you know, this is our ordinance? Is that what, what?
Read the ordinance and see what it says we're supposed to do, and follow that, either long.
Know what the ordinance says before you make an act.
You understand, you understand.
What's that value of the ordinance?
And I like that part, if it's set.
What's the problem with that?
Yeah.
Any more further discussion?
I think, you know, this offered, this does a lot.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll move on to approve building permits.
Thanks, guys.
See you, Joe.
Have a good night.
You too.
One in there from Jamie Rolfe, Kevin Barrett. Western Iowa Energy.
You can see kinda in the bottom right-hand corner of each one of them, Dale has signed off on them, you guys seen that?
Any questions or concerns or discussion on the three?
I'd make a motion to approve all three.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve all three building permits for the three that are listed, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Rick, discuss and approve summary help hires.
We've got several applications. And I don't know. I don't know, I mean, since I've been here, we haven't got this many applications, but, I mean, we got really two applications from high school kids. And, and I think that's kinda what we're looking for. Carter Chatterster and Max Bloom are the two kids that are still in high school who would help us do the mowing and, um.
How many are looking to hire, Rick?
At least two, it depends on terms of sports, not, you know, someone we run into a sports and vacations, or nobody run a.
No, are these, these kids, they're not eligible to ride the garbage truck or anything, are they?
Yeah.
They are eligible to do that, okay.
We've, we've had Aaron Rolfe working with us a little bit. He's, he worked with us for the past two years, right, Rick?
Yep.
And, um, he's a really good worker. I mean, if you tell the kid to do something, he's gonna get it done, you don't have to hold his hand, um, so. I mean, I think Rick and I would recommend that we hire him and these two, uh, just sports, basically. I mean, these kids could be going, you know, early in the day.
How many of the reps do you have?
Uh, we have one. Two, three, four, five, six. And I, I guess I spoke wrong, Cody Rolfe is, uh, is also one who is in high school yet.
Did he work with us last year?
Yeah, he did.
The three you mentioned before are the three that you would prefer?
Yeah.
Hiring wage at seven seventy-five an hour, or seven fifty?
Same as last year, I think it's, uh, I believe it's eight bucks.
Eight bucks, okay. That's fine. I'm sure the council will get, kinda wanna know, that's the.
Do we wanna, do we wanna put some hour limits on these guys, since we're getting three of them, or what are you guys thinking?
Well, I think you should, if you, uh, do we get too far a line?
Yeah.
Well, if it doesn't rain much, we ain't gonna have much more to do.
No, that's very true.
You gotta do another thing, though, just cause it don't rain, though, it's the only thing that any kids do.
Okay. Well, it's, you're the one that.
I mean, you knock off garbage, there's one day out of five.
Right.
And it takes a good three days on its wet to do that cemetery, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Which, plus they do that little bit at the airport, plus they do out here at the, uh, that corner where our, our stone is at.
You're all about the pool, parks, complex.
Yeah, there's a lot to mow, there's ones to mow, yeah.
We got a lot of more.
I think last year, you guys in charge, you did a good job, I don't know, I was doing away with that again this year, and.
I mean, if there's nothing to do, I always have.
Well, that, that's the key, I think you gotta be in charge of that.
Yeah, I heard that.
If you don't need them, they're not used to, you know.
How's the equipment holding up this part of the yard?
We got the one, the blue mower, it's probably.
Four or five years old, ain't it?
Yeah, next year would be probably a good idea to do something like that, but maybe you do them all year with it.
Any new ones working out good, doing your blood?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the old one's getting to the point where you're putting about as much money in, in it as it's worth.
A while ago, we get that, I was just, you were gonna.
Oh, shoot. I think we're. You gotta talk about changing it.
Uh, discuss money distribution between banks. Um, this is a, a request that we had to put this on here, and, you know, this is something that we've probably talked about before. Haven't talked about it for a while, but, uh, seems like there's more money in Bank Midwest than there is in West Side, and so. I don't know if you guys wanna move the money, I thought a little bit about it, and.
It was discussed, but my last meeting, meeting before was the last one.
Well, not necessarily this, but, uh, we talked about the endowment fund and where that should be. But, and, uh. We would, we would have to figure out what money we moved over there, cause it, I mean, we really don't do anything with the money that's in West Side. That money just basically sits there, other than the Queen Center, you know, they're, they're always writing checks out there. Probably have anything to do with that, I guess, you know, just get your thoughts on it.
I, I was kinda thought about that, because I think both banks are here, we should try and get a little moved over if it's at all possible. If it isn't, well, then we can't do it.
What's your feelings, Franny, to make it a little more equal?
Well, they did buy our bonds, West Side Bank, didn't they?
Both of them did.
Yeah.
Both of them did, they bought some, they bought some, so they are buying our, uh, bonds, and that's kinda nice to, to keep it local.
Ron, your feelings?
We, we buy bonds, too. Lots of them.
Well, maybe we should, uh. Chris, why don't you check and see what would be feasible, bring up the next meeting and.
I guess how much is in each one, I guess is.
I would say you could move, move a lot of stuff, you guys.
What, what, what would be easier to move to, you know, equalize all of that?
Well, it'd be easier to move is as you create these new accounts, you do it then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't take an existing account and just jerk it out and put it on the other, that's.
Yeah, that's right.
Not a very nice thing to do, or smart thing to do, if you're going to create a different account.
Well, yours was, was the only bank in town, was Bank Midwest, now we got another one. So.
Wasn't your money in that there, Scott?
No, there's money in Bank, I think we should just get into the bank and business, and they get all the money they lend for nothing, charge you interest.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll bring back.
America, you got a shot there.
Yeah. I'll bring to the next meeting what I think would be.
How many accounts are what, how much money is it what?
Yeah, would be relatively easy to move over, to switch, yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna move any money that we have to transfer back and forth.
Oh, yeah, no, you don't do that one.
Cause that would just be a pain.
You gotta make it simple for you, Chris, otherwise it won't be.
Well, and not, and not only that, Gary, but that, I mean, anytime you have that ability to be able to do that, that's one more place you could get yourself in trouble.
Yeah, yeah, you get yourself caught, yeah.
Yeah, so if we don't have to do that, it's not.
Well, we're gonna table that, we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting. Discuss and approve the liquor license for the hayloft.
I'd make a motion to approve the liquor license for the hayloft.
Let's, let's put in there, Franny, cause it's, I mean, it says right there, pending gram shop, and what that means is that.
She's never gram shopped yet.
The insurance isn't, isn't through yet, that doesn't mean she doesn't have it, it just takes a while to get that done. And I did not get an email saying that it was okay yet, so we can approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the haylofts.
Pending the gram shop.
Liquor license pending the gram shop.
That's a good idea, Franny, thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for the hayloft, pending the approval of the gram shop insurance, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Uh, public forum, I have one thing, the Northwest Iowa meeting is the twenty-fourth, we have a meeting before that. So, and it's at Lakeview. In April twenty-fourth, they've moved it back.
That's, yeah, it's in Lakeview, Orion's?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you will have to let Chris know by, I believe, a week from today, correct, Chris?
It's there tomorrow, it's, we have Thursday, Thursday.
It's on Thursday, I know that, I do know that.
Ooh. The program will be about, uh, liquor licenses.
That's interesting, three samples.
Chris Thomas thing here, we're just tailing us here, I'm sure, little round deal.
Yeah. Does anybody know if they'll be going to that meeting? You are?
One.
What night is it?
I expect.
Thursday, twenty-fourth.
One hour, or is Linda?
She might go two foot two down. She, it was on the seventeenth, on Monday, Thursday, and I complained about that. Said I had to usher that night, I couldn't be there. And my substitute usher, he don't seem to help too.
Amen.
Somebody across from me said, yeah, go ahead and go to that meeting, and said, I got a usher for you.
Yeah, forgot.
You forgot.
It was there.
I guess a little germ, they don't wanna talk to Gary, but, but there's nothing else, I don't have anything to do with the forum.
Anybody else have anything in the public forum? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll second, I move and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Go ahead and plug Happy.
All opposed, nay?